Thank you. We are now ready to begin. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, May 1st, 2001. The council has 15 council districts. We have some interesting music going on here somewhere. Did I do that? Yeah, it's Music Appreciation Day. Hold on. Now, how would we tell? All right, we're gonna keep going anyway. We can get through this. We're tough. There are 15 council districts. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, and sometimes into the afternoon. We are being televised on Channel 35, and we are also available by council phone. We will start by calling the roll.
Bernsen, Check. Fuhrer Hernandez Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Rilatonas, Florence, Wax, Walters, and Glanter. Eleven members present and in court. Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are approved.
Now it's time for salute to the flag.
That brings us to the salute to the flag. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to lead us?
Yes, members of you all, place your right hand over your heart. For some reason, I'm inclined to ask one of the children to help me with this right now, Madam Chair. Could I have a volunteer?
Pick a volunteer. Who's gonna volunteer?
Why don't you come up, you're closest. Come on over here.
I think you need to let her get up on your chair.
Okay, ready?
I pledge allegiance.
Okay, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
And your name?
Nicole.
Nicole, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. You did a good job. And now, members of the council and the audience, we're going to have the invocation from Reverend Percy Hill of the Cochran Avenue Baptist Church.
Better stand.
Thank you. We are now ready to begin. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, May 1st, 2001. The council has 15 council districts. We have some interesting music going on here somewhere. Did I do that? Yeah, it's Music Appreciation Day. Hold on. Now, how would we tell? All right, we're gonna keep going anyway. We can get through this. We're tough. There are 15 council districts. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, and sometimes into the afternoon. We are being televised on Channel 35, and we are also available by council phone. We will start by calling the roll.
Bernsen, Chek, Fuhrer, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, and Glanter. Eleven members present and in court. Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, those are approved.
Now's time for salute to the flag.
That brings us to the salute to the flag. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to lead us?
Yes, members of you all, place your right hand over your heart. For some reason, I'm inclined to ask one of the children to help me with this right now, Madam Chair. Could I have a volunteer?
Pick a volunteer. Who's gonna volunteer?
Why don't you come up? You're closest. Come on over here. To remind us of our future.
I think you need to let her get up on your chair. Okay, ready?
Pledge allegiance. Right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
And your name?
Nicole.
Nicole, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. You did a good job. And now, members of the council and the audience, we're going to have the invocation from Reverend Percy Hill of the Cochran Avenue Baptist Church.
Let us stand. Shall we pray? Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we have gathered today on this great, grand, and glorious occasion to be about the business of the children of men. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege that is ours on today. We thank you, Lord, for your goodness. We thank you, Lord, for life and for liberty. We thank you for time to live, for we realize that we live and move and have our being in you. We ask, oh God, that you would just bless today with your presence, that you would give receptivity, that you would give clarity on today, Lord. We pray for this council. We pray for our honorable mayor. We pray for your people everywhere. And, Lord, we thank you now that as we be about and move about your business, that you would just lead us in the way that you would have us to go. Thank you now for the privilege of prayer. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for coming. That brings us to the first order of business. Well, it's the third order of business, but go ahead.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number one, a request by the applicant and concurred in by Council District 11 to continue that matter till May 9th.
All right. If there's no objection, if there's anyone here on item one, it is now continued to May 9th.
Item number eight, a request by Councilmember Savornich that that matter be continued one week until May 8th.
Item...
Eight.
All right. Item eight will be continued for one week. Anybody else?
I've just heard the councilmember Ridley, Thomas wishes to continue item number 14 for two weeks.
Hang on one second. Okay, item 14, that was?
14 for two weeks would be May 15th.
Item 14 will be continued to May 15th.
That brings you to the regular agenda. Items number two through four are items which public hearings have been held.
All right. Items two through four, members of the council. Any specials? No specials? Open the roll. Items two through four. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved.
Items number five through 16, with the exception of eight and 14 that have been acted on, are items which public hearings have not been held.
All right. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on those items? We have cards on... Are you giving me a card on 12? Is that what's happening here? All right, we have a card on 12. Let's call that special. And... We only went up to 16 so far, I think, right? Okay. We have cards on... Okay, item eight. Item 12. Okay, and what's that one? 23? Okay, add those in there. Okay. We're not up to 23 yet. Okay. Now, members of the... We have called item 12 special. Any other specials? Items five through seven and nine through 16. Fifteen? On item 15? Fifteen. Request to continue item 15 for one week.
That would be May 8th.
Okay. Item 15, no problem. Item 15 is now continued. So that leaves us... Any specials? Five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 13, or 16. Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next.
Items number 18 through 23 on the regular agenda are items which public hearings have not been held.
All right. We have cards on 23, so we'll call that special. On five, fourth with on five. Item 20, we have a card. We'll call that special. Mr. Savornich wants to continue item 18 for one week. Is there any objection? It says continued for one week.
May 8th.
May 8th. And fourth with on... Number two, we did... We did do number two. Okay, fourth with on number two. Okay. We're up to 19... 21, 22. That's it, right? Okay. Any specials? Those... I have no cards on those, so we're gonna close the public hearing on those items. Any specials? No specials? Open the roll. 19, 21, and 22. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on 22, please. Okay, next.
That brings you back to item number 12. Just call it special for a card.
All right. On item 12, Mr. Baxter.
Madam President, members of your honorable council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Baxter. I live at 1319 Ingram Street in Los Angeles. My respectful request is that the question of naming the council chamber, the John Ferraro Chamber, should be referred to the City Ethics Commission for study and report. The first time I encountered the idea of naming courts and legislative chambers for prominent legislative and judicial figures came in municipal court, where a judge had a plaque on the wall of the court in which he presided to commemorate the first member of his ethnic minority to sit on the United States Supreme Court. I accepted that plaque as an open invitation to all to come in and hang up their own personal choice of a hero. The judge got all excited and held me in contempt with five days in the county jail. My ethnic hero was not apparently as good as his ethnic hero. I had similar difficulties with former Chief Justice Malcolm Lucas. I was arrested three times at three separate hearings, tried, convicted, and sentenced to three months in the county jail. I was in jail about 43 days. The judge refused, absolutely refused, to sign my transcripts on appeal. Perhaps a new city attorney will explain to this judge about the rights of appeal in this county. What I am suggesting is that my credentials are well-founded to ask for this proposal to be referred to the City Ethics Commission to see if they, as professionally not politically motivated, shall spell out the traditions of Her Majesty's loyal subjects in preserving a scrupulous respect for all ethnic minorities where lawmaking, the review, and enforcement of laws takes place, all of which is respectfully submitted. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. That closes the public hearing on item 12. The matter is now before us. Members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next, I believe is item 20. Hold on, 12. Item 20, Mr. David Jackson. On the microphone over here. And pull it up so it's comfortable for you.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chairman, councilmembers, and to the policymakers, I guess. My name is David Jackson. I reside at 1738 West 37th Place in Los Angeles, California. I'm here today to ask about item 20 and that the report that's coming from the mayor's office and the city's office to this council. I probably have nothing to say about what they're gonna say or do, but I have something that's very interesting today to everyone in this council chambers. Some of you may recognize my name and figure out, well, what is Mr. Jackson gonna say today? A lot of y'all know what I'm gonna say today, because today is the day that it's come for time for recognition. I'm not here to argue or make fuss with anybody about what they need to do, but I'm here to say simply, a lot of stuff is going on in Los Angeles, especially with the police department, and we're gonna have a monitor that's gonna come up in here. I just ask one thing. First, I would ask the city, and I would recommend it to committee, that the city would... Attorney would report to this council board, members each, if requested so, one council request. Why is it that if you have laws of this land that he's supposed to watch over us for the police messing with us, whereas I was arrested, tried, convicted, granted a motion for a new trial, retry it again? But based on what? I was based on nothing. But like I said, I don't wanna argue. I just wanna just come here and ask that if this council member's gonna receive a report from the city and the mayor's office, I would ask this council body... member meeting to look at this stuff and let them report back to us and tell us why are the laws in the Harvey Madden-Reemer cases that settle throughout the land that if a person is arrested by a police officer, he must show that receipt to the state court if there's gonna be a conviction? And for the people to allow stuff like this to go on and don't wanna look at it is a big... I know you wanna cut me off.
No, I don't wanna cut you off. I just wanna ask you to finish up.
Okay, I'll finish. I think that when we look at the Harvey Madden-Reemer issues, we don't have to be talking about spending millions of dollars to straighten out the LAPD, because you know what an MT printout is. I'm looking at it on the top of the screen right here. Those are MTD printouts we're looking at. When someone's arrested, they in a car, that's evidence. They put that stuff in the computer. But when we get arrested out in the street, oh, we don't got this stuff. Where's this stuff at? I filed for discovery. Discovery said they don't have it, but they tried me on it anyway. They don't have an officer receipt, but we talking about, oh, the receipt. The receipt mean everything. The state of California legislator have consistently rejected the people's contention on any appeal without an officer receipt of information showing how a person was arrested. And I was arrested wrongfully in this county twice, and I had to represent my own self because no civic-minded individuals would come up and represent me. So I'm here to represent myself, and whether I lose or be this fool or this man that's crying over here, it's gonna be some change around here. If I have to learn it from every aspect, I will be at your doors from now on. I will be on your phones. I will learn to read this, your agenda, and make motions, citizen motions. Well, I'm not here to ask you to do anything. I could come here and almost tell you, but that would be disrespectful, because I believe that it's a nice, fine body that's actually been here. I know there are some great, fine members on this board, especially Thomas Ridley and Rita Waters and Mike Hernandez and Alice Padilla, Nick Potato, you understand me? And some of y'all are just straight scum.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That closes the public hearing, and we'll turn now to our legislative analyst for his report.
Madam President, members of the council, the status of the independent monitor selection has been also requested by the judge.
Wait, hang on, Ron. There's a lot of noise back here. Guys, if you wanna hear the report on the status of the monitor, this is the time to do so. Go ahead.
Report's been asked by the judges well on the status, and it is the intent of the city team to report as follows to the judge that within three weeks that we will in fact have before the council and back to the judge a selection of a monitor. That the process thus far has been, as we stated before, there were roughly 19 people who proposed. Five of those proposals we did reject, and we interviewed the 14 others. Department of Justice and the city team believe that over the next week that we can resolve our differences and come to a selection and have that before council in time to get to the judge within three weeks.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, Mr. Deaton, I just couldn't let this go by without asking a question.
I had that feeling, Mr. Hernandez.
One, my primary concern is, as you're going through the process, the team is having an opportunity to look at the whole group of potential proposals. The council is not gonna be given that perspective, is my understanding. My understanding is you're gonna bring one recommendation, and the recommendation you're gonna bring to us is gonna be the recommendation that the team agreed upon, the Justice Department agreed upon. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, what if there's more than one team the Justice Department could agree to? How will we know that? And how do we know that the team, in its ultimate selection, is bringing the kind of group that we would like to be our monitor? See, what I'm trying to say is, if there was three teams everybody could agree to, and then we got to see the differences, you know, I would like to kind of know that, because there could be differences. And those differences could be from perspectives of how they plan to approach this monitoring issue. Some of us might feel that there's a real strong concern to have a community perspective and to develop that credibility with the community. Others might feel that there has to be a real strong law enforcement perspective. And we saw, for example, just a real clear disagreement between the police chief's opinion on community policing and this council's opinion on community policing. I'm one who believes that the community's credibility in working with the police department has to be of utmost importance for the reform process. So how do we address those issues? Because what I do know today is that there's only 13 members here, and we're gonna be voting on what's gonna become the monitoring process of the reform of our police department. And what you're telling me is I'm gonna be given one choice, and I'd just like you to address that question for me.
I... Two things. One was, that was our instruction, and that is in large part, unfortunately, what you will be given. Secondly, though, I do believe at the end of the day that we can give you the reasons we selected who we selected, and I don't believe that there will be... And I'll be happy to explain to you the ones that weren't selected and why, and I don't believe that we will be... Let me put it this way. I think the city team and the DOJ team will be exceedingly happy to have an individual monitor to agree upon. I think it's been a difficult... More difficult than we anticipated to come to this conclusion. I don't believe there's three monitors that the Justice Department would agree with. I don't think the range of choices is large as you're imagining, and I'll be happy to sit down and talk to you about it. But within three weeks, we'll be back with our final recommendation, and we believe it will be a joint one with DOJ and one that you will be pleased with.
And Madam Chair, I'm willing to say I've gone with Mr. Deaton at least 85% of the time. It's the 15% I worry about.
So does he. Mr. Wax.
In the shorter version of Mr. Hernandez's question, I was under the impression all along that for some reason you were gonna bring in the top two. That had always been... Ms. Miskowski, is that your impression? Mr. Fuhrer?
Yes. The Ad Hoc Budget Committee has suggested they bring in the two that they were most comfortable with. The interesting thing is, I think Mr. Deaton has indicated, is that we now have another partner in this, and that is DOJ. And I'm not sure that we might have two that we would have been comfortable with, and I think Mr. Deaton can tell us who that is. But if DOJ does not agree, then that means we go to a court, and the court may have a very different opinion.
Well, I think we have to have all that before us to have an ample discussion. We may end up coming to the same conclusion, but it seems to me that you shouldn't sort of do the pre-selection for us, and I think I would really prefer to go back to the original approach where the top two would come in, and we can have that discussion back and forth as to the pros and cons of the different ones. Somehow, I think it's really... I don't think we really voted to put into the group's hands, in essence, the right to select it, which barring... When it's an up or down, when it's yes or no, barring something really dramatic, it's going to be a yes. And I think that we should have more of an involvement than that, and I thought that the top two was a compromise in that respect. Out of 14 remaining applicants, it doesn't seem inappropriate to have at least two. And so I really would prefer to go back to the other way, because otherwise, it's virtually an automatic yes, barring something really unforeseen.
I don't disagree with your conclusion. I think that to... What I'd like today to do is that we report to the judge on the process, and that in three weeks, we're gonna meet with the Department of Justice this week. Can we put this issue...
Well, I don't want you to report on the process of the conclusion that you've reported to us without us, and that changes. I'd like to go back, members of council, and ask that you at least bring us at least two, the top two choices to this committee. That's the process I thought we had agreed upon, and I hate to see it change. And if you're gonna go to the judge now and say, this is what it's gonna be, then you're gonna come back here and say, well, we already told the judge, and it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. I've watched these things developed that way in the past.
No. That's what I'm saying is, the process that we said that we would tell the judge is that what we've done thus far, and that we would be back to council and... is that what we've done thus far and that we would be back to council and after the council makes its selection, that we would report within three weeks to the judge. It did not say that one or two.
But, but that, that then avoids the, the question that Mr. Hernandez raised and I'm raising. We had, I believe, established a policy that you would bring us the top two choices. I think that's a minimum. I think that's a compromise between, say, the top three Mr. Hernandez was suggesting, all of them, not, you know. So I would really, I don't know if it's necessary to have a motion. If it is, I'll move that we re, we reaffirm our prior policy to have the top two choices brought before us.
All I'm asking is that issue, which will not be changed, that we address that, if we continue that part of this item for one week.
I don't mind continuing that so long as you don't pick somebody in the meanwhile and say this is it because then it'll be like voting against the person you pick, which is not really what we're saying. We don't know who you're going to pick, but what we're saying is we did not delegate to you this final selection, which for all practical purposes it would be. And so I'm happy to continue that for a week if in fact you don't take any steps to sort of select one in that time. Because if you do that, then you'll have made it moot and.
What we're going to do, this is perfectly clear, we're going to sit down with the Department of Justice and see where we agree and where we disagree on various, and we will try to come to at least the first.
Even if they don't agree, I want to know that. Those are factors. I mean.
That's fine.
I just really think you ought to bring at least two and possibly three before us. And I, I don't know how to, I thought that was our policy. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion. I don't, I don't know that it's necessary because I thought that was our policy, but the motion would be to reaffirm that you bring at least the top two choices to us for, for our consideration.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. To, uh, to thoroughly complicate things, let me try to describe how I understand things are and then go from, from there. In the committee, which Ms. Zakowski chairs, the Committee on Police Practices Reform, all that stuff, we said, and the council ratified, that the top two choices would come to us. That was what we did and the council agreed. And that was, but that was at a time, I need to be corrected if I misunderstand something, please. Mr. Deaton isn't the best person to do that. That was at a time, I need a little, it's a little quieter back here, please, so I can hear what I'm saying. That was at a time when we thought we could get within the city a, an agreement about who the, our negotiating team felt with the top two choices based on the clean submissions that were made. No mixing and matching, no piecing together of piece, people from different teams, but the teams that were done. My understanding is that it's not going to work that way because we can't get consensus with DOJ on any of those teams as they were originally constituted. And as a result, we're working to try to achieve consensus with DOJ based on the best of the best, kind of, Mr. Deaton, is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
So the landscape has been changing and making it more complicated. Now, what we do in light of those changes is also complicated because I think, because I, I was the mover of the idea that we have at least two choices before us with an explanation in depth as to why one was preferred over the other because I want the council to be able to say what factors matter the most in this. Not the politics of who supports who, but what factors matter the most. How we achieve that in a setting where there's no, there's no consensus among the council, the mayor and DOJ, that three-part team here of any of those choices is a problem. I, I would like us to wrestle with that a little bit further, but I wanted to at least see if I understood the lay of the land properly. One concern, Mr. Deaton, and I feel comfortable asking this publicly, is I have heard from a number of people the concern expressed, and I hope that it's wrong, that there is within our own city team some meaningful difference, particularly when it comes to whether people completely outside of the city need to be chosen in lieu of people who have city experience because of the ostensible objectivity that that provides or something. Whereas I, I have some concerns about the importance of people who know something about the city, who have experience here. I think that that should be an important goal for us. Is that something you can speak to at all?
Well, let, just put it from a pers, I'll tell you my perspective on that. If the experience of the individuals involved is suing the city and suing the city is relative to police issues, then it's not an experience that I think is relevant to them providing, being monitored to the city. And I did not look at them in that light favorably.
Without going into the details of that particular view because I have a lot of people.
I think the city, I, I do believe city experience and understanding the city, understanding police force, et cetera. But if their experience with the city has been suing us, I don't necessarily think that's knowledge of the city that, that's valuable.
Although, although again, it would depend, I would think, on the basis of that litigation because sometimes the city makes mistakes that someone needs to correct. I, I don't, I don't have a, a dog in that hunt. I just, and I'm not sure how I feel about that.
But as a part of the consent decree, there's a provision I, I, about the selection of, of the monitor and has relative to be objectivity and to the selection process. And we follow those kinds of guidelines. We also included those in the RFP, et cetera. I don't think that it's, it's a, uh, uh, in, on this flip side of that story, not from the city team, but the Department of Justice side, has not been excited about ex-deputy chiefs of LAPD being the police experts for some of these monitoring units either.
Mr. Deaton, are we at the stage now where the city team and DOJ are essentially choosing one from column A and one from column B and recreating teams to suit our goals?
No, I think that we're, there's going to, I, I believe where we are is that we have, um, we've narrowed it down to, actually, I've narrowed it down to two. And I think we're trying to, to come to a conclusion on which would be the best, which one the Department of Justice and we can agree on and, and if there is a way of, of maybe using some of the talents of, of some other people who also bid in that process is being discussed, not.
But if we've narrowed it to two, why not, even if DOJ doesn't agree that those are the top two, shouldn't the council know what the top two choices that the internal city team thinks are and why they are and in the order in which we place them and so forth? Why not? And I know my time's expired, Madam President.
That's not inconsistent with, um, hearing a report that this is who the Justice Department agreed on, is it?
Right. I'm not, I'm not saying that we wouldn't, that I feel uncomfortable at explaining why or who our second choice was. It's just that, that we also have a situation where the direction in which I think is important to meet the timetable of the court that we're saying we're going to meet is that we're going to come back with a contract with one of those monitors, not two of those monitors.
But I think what, I have two more people who want to be heard, but I think what everybody is asking is can you also, when you do that, explain to us who the other, if there was a second choice, is that, if that doesn't violate something?
No, I think at that point we'll be fine.
I think that what the council originally said and then the council amended is what we, how we ought to proceed. The council initially said we have this team who shall go and represent various factions within the cities, the same group essentially that brought us the consent decree that then we went over and essentially, as we've said, 90% of what that team brought us is what was in the consent decree that we accepted. But I think the council needs to know the level of deliberation, the issues, without personalities and without, um, other problems as to why it was narrowed down and why even that the city is now comfortable with two, who those two are, and then why DOJ may accept one or the other. I don't think there's anything wrong in that other than, um, to some degree, some of the issues I, I understand that have been raised by DOJ perhaps should stay confidential in terms of other relationships that they've had with various parts of the legal team. We don't want to raise any specter on, on anyone's reputation. But I think that the fair distillation and understanding as to why the two among the, the 14 were acceptable to the city and why DOJ recommends one is what should be brought to the council. If the council feels very, very strongly after hearing that and understands that our only, um, option is to go to the judge and say, we're sorry, we said we'd agree, we disagree, we then throw it open to the judge and that the judge can do it all on his own as to whom he might choose or what he would choose, it wouldn't necessarily be down to ours versus Department of Justice's. And I think actually if it were just the two of us to go forward to the court and say who we would choose, DOJ might choose someone, not one of these two. Because DOJ's first choice and our first choice may have both sort of, um, we may, we're both not able necessarily to convince each other of the rightness of that, but we were able, I think, in the discussions to be convinced that maybe we should look together to find someone else selecting. And that's the kind of discussion that's been going on, I think I said it much more mildly than the discussions have been. But I think we need to know that and we need to have it presented, not necessarily with all the names and all of the factors, but at least the issues as to why in Team A, B, C, or D, there were issues that were raised that were objectionable to one part of the other or enough concern, if not objection, objection may be too strong. But I think we need to bring that forward as we initially planned. I have no problem with our CLA saying to the judge, we are working to precipitate that and consistently bring forward to the council what we need to know for that decision to affirm the recommendation that will be brought and hopefully it will be a recommendation as we are able to tell the judge that the two sides do agree.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, just a few observations. I think there is hardly any issue more important before us than the question of police accountability, effective law enforcement. Secondly, I want to say that what's at stake beyond what may appear to be obvious is the level of public confidence that we have on the matter of, of effective law enforcement. I think it's a threat to the quality of life of our city for there to be a low level of confidence in our police department. I believe that the effort to move forward an agenda called reform has to be more public. It has to be more well appreciated by the persons who want to know that their police department is doing what it needs to be doing. And the extent to which the processes at this point in time are somewhat cloistered does not help us deal with the question of public confidence. And that's a generic comment, and I've said this in committee, Madam Chair, I think you will recall that, because we need to have some sense that we are communicating with regularity to our respective constituencies that the problems that have defined the image of the department and by extension, the image of the city are being dealt with. And we are not, in my view, sufficiently doing that. So as far as the public broadly speaking is concerned, we have these major crises. We then claim that we're going to deal with them. We do deal with them, but we deal with them in what I want to describe in a, in a very clear way as a bureaucratic response. It requires more than that and ought to cause people to know that we are doing what they expect us to do. Now, this is one illustration of that, I think. Obviously, this is a very sensitive matter and we're trying to process it. But I think the inward manner in which we are addressing the problem is ultimately to our collective disadvantage, not as members of the council exclusively, but as a city as a whole. We need to communicate in the clearest of terms that this legislative body, this governing entity, is taking seriously the concerns of public safety as it relates to police reform. Many of us have said this is not an issue of either or. It's not a question of effective police enforcement or police reform. It is essentially both. And to the extent that that is the case, I would think that every opportunity made available to us, we ought to be as public within reason about what it is we are doing. And we ought to make it clear that we don't want decisions of consequence made by a committee that may have been given the authority to do so up to a point and then we are reduced to essentially rubber stamping it. That is, in my view, not the way in which we can inspire public confidence. And I say that about the entirety of this process because I fear that we will have to revisit this on the next crisis.
Thank you. I have nobody else who wishes to be heard. Mr. Wax had moved, but I did not hear a second and I was trying to, you had moved to.
Yes, it's really to reaffirm the process as further laid out by Ms. Zakowski. I think it's, and is supported by the comments.
She basically seconded it then. So, so, uh, now, Mr. Deaton, just in case you want to have what will certainly not be the last word on this, but the next word on this. The motion then is to reaffirm the process, which I believe means that you would come forward, when you come back, with a discussion of the two you might also have based on the discussion we had earlier. You may find that there's only one everybody can agree on and if that's the case, of course, I assume you'll tell us that as well.
My, the intent, I, just so I, what my intent.
I just want to make sure we all understand what's going to happen here.
I think this, we will come forth with a selection, with a contract for that selection and a second.
Wait, wait, no, I know that, I know that. Hold on, let him finish.
And explain who our second choice was. Well, there's no.
That's not the deal.
Okay, that's not what Mr. Wax's motion is.
The motion is not to have you go give a contract with who you want and then come back and tell us who didn't get it. The motion is, is that you bring the top two selections to this council and we have a public debate over the criteria and the factors involved. And if the, if the Department of Justice likes or doesn't like one of the, I want to know why and I want to know how we weigh that. I mean, you have missed the whole discussion here.
Okay, wait, wait. I'm sorry. I think, I think you're right. I think that the, the motion, your motion is clearly different from.
Yes.
But now, I'm going to call on you because now I have Wax, Ms. Zakowski and Fuhrer again.
And as a matter of fact, that is the, the way it is right now, even without a motion.
Point of order, Joel. The, the initial order of the city council was that our team was supposed to go back, negotiate with DOJ and bring back a contract for an independent monitor. We amended that to say that we wanted a discussion as to who the top two selections were of the city and then all the other discussions we've had today as to who or why DOJ didn't find somebody acceptable, why we didn't find who DOJ wanted as acceptable. But we still ultimately need a contract.
After we have that discussion, not before.
Right, but, and if you want to do it in a two-phase discussion, that's fine, but we need the contract and that's what the department, what the justice, the judge in the case has now been concerned about, saying that he wants both sides to report on the progress with an indication that if we don't get something quickly to him, and something has got to be a contract, that he is going to take it over.
Madam President?
But my gut is, is that before you have your contract, you have your discussion of the two whom you might contract with. And when you select the one you want to contract with, you then have a contract. If you bring the contract back first with one and tell us who didn't get the other, for all practical purposes, you have, you have found a way around the very discussion we all feel is necessary.
Again, Joel, we can't bring in a contract to DOJ, to, to the judge without Department of Justice agreeing. So we can't do the contract. So if, if we were to bring in a contract with somebody that we selected that they don't, it's as good as not doing a contract.
I understand all of that. I think we need to have this discussion as we have discussed today before we proceed to finalize a contract with anyone to give to a judge. Otherwise, you are just basically giving up and it'll just be lip service and it'll, and well, it'll, it just makes.
Madam President?
Mr. Fuhrer.
Yeah, thank you. I think just to clarify what I think could be a consensus, it may be what we're all saying, just to be sure. The contract content is, is not what's really at issue. The question is whose name is on the contract? What I thought we were saying as a consensus matter is two things come to the council concurrently. One is the contract content. The other is without a name. The other is to recommend, as a recommended contractor and, for us to vote on, and a second choice who is not recommended and we have to decide which to choose. And there's a discussion as to which is, is better. Ms. Zakowski, isn't that essentially what we're talking about?
No.
No, Mr. Deaton is saying that's not what we're talking about.
Except, except that, what we have to present to the judge, we can't say, Your Honor, here is our contract with whom we would like, DOJ doesn't agree. Because if we don't, then it goes to the judge to decide.
But here's what I understood, Ms. Zakowski, and that is that this council needs, before anything goes to the judge, we need to determine who we think should be the choice. What will happen is Mr. Deaton and the negotiating team, the mayor's office will have presented to DOJ who they believe that the top choice should be. But it's a tentative recommendation because the council has to ratify it. The court can't see anything other than a tentative one until we ratify it. That is what I. That is what I thought the rhythm was. There's a recommendation, DOJ can buy into it, you can report that DOJ thinks this is a fine recommendation. There's a second choice, you can report on DOJ's views regarding the second choice, and we choose, and then it goes to Judge Fees. What am I misunderstanding here?
Well, you cannot, there is no such thing as a generic contract with a consultant when the consultants' contract, their proposals vary by millions of dollars in their approach to things. We, what I had understood in terms of this was that we would, with Department of Justice, make a selection, work out a contract with them, come to you and say, "This is who we want, this is who we are, this is, we have a contract for, and here is number two. If you don't like number one, throw number one out, and we'll go back and negotiate a contract with number two." But to not bring a contract, you cannot negotiate, there is no such thing as a generic contract. You can't, the contract is a consultant to the city bargaining situation, and depending on who the consultant is, who the monitor is, that contract will say different things. It has to do with money, it has to do with the team and who's going to be paid, it has to do with what the services are and the checks and balances relative to that particular monitor.
For what it's worth, does it have to do with the services or merely with the method of payment and the amount of payment? Aren't the services essentially the same across the board?
They're relatively the same. The difference, one of the things that is at issue between us and our, and everybody, is exactly what, how, what is the approach that's going to be used in the monitoring? In one case, the monitor, the proposed monitor has outlined a particular process, and in the other case, that has not. We want to negotiate a comparable process with the one that didn't outline it in a certain fashion. It's, I am, all I'm saying is that if you don't like our choice, we'll explain who number two is. I would be happy, given barring confidentiality's relative to why we rejected those, go down the whole list. It's not, I'm not, this has turned out to be a lot more complicated than I ever anticipated it being, this discussion has too. But the, this is not an attempt to, and I appreciate what it sounds like, that we're coming up to a conclusion and giving you no choices, and that's, never was the intent. The difficulty is, is that coming to a conclusion, given what we were given, we're trying to put together a proposal with Department of Justice to come in the next three weeks with a monitor. If you don't like who we come up with, we'll tell you who number two, I'll tell you who number three, four, five, and six are, and explain why each of those weren't selected. There are a variety of reasons, but I, right now, our initial discussion, our initial instruction, which we have been following, is that we would bring a selection to council with a contract. My understanding of the additional information is that we would provide you who number two was and why number two wasn't selected.
Before I call on the three people who are up there as well, let me just ask if this will meet everybody's needs. If you were to come back, there's no action required on today, the item was simply to have you report to us. There's a motion now to have you make an additional report. Could you come back short of, in a shorter time than the framework you outlined for coming in with a contract, could you come back in between with a report on the order of what Mr. Wax is asking for, where you would say there are two teams or three teams or whatever?
If you recall, I suggested.
Wait, 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 let me just ask one more question, and you can answer both of them. And the other question I have is, I don't know what kinds of confidentiality agreements may exist in the course of the proposal process. Is that part of what is at issue here?
In part, in part. It's a complicat, I mean, we're in on a request for proposal process, we're in a proposal process. There are certain rules that the city has followed and are required to follow, and I don't want to avoid those. But if you recall, what I did suggest and ask is that we continue this item for the second number one week, and either at that point in time, we continue that, this issue, I want to, I want the ability to report to the judge that we're going to do this in three weeks. I think we've got to wrap this thing up and complete it. We continue this for two, for one week on the second item, give me either the opportunity to figure out in the context of what we're doing, what we can report and what we, and as much as we can to, at that point, share with you where we are. We'll be, we'll be meeting this week with the Department of Justice, and by next Tuesday, it'll give me a whole week to figure out what I can explain to you at that point, if that's permissible.
Well, so in that case, you'd be coming back in a week to report to us on.
The same issue.
The same issue, but with, as much as you can.
Right.
Fairly tell us about the top two and where the Justice Department stands.
Right, and that would be before.
And then, that's before this three-week deadline that you're talking about.
And that is also before we begin any contract negotiations or anything like that. So it does, it does prevent the concern that we will have everything in place.
Now, Joel, does that do it for you? Actually, Burnson's next, and he hasn't talked yet, so let's go ahead. Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council, I don't think it really matters. I'll be very frank with you. I think the judge has always intended to take this over. I said so originally when I opposed the consent decree. This is the same judge that has ruled that our police department is equivalent to the mafia with the Rico thing. This is the same judge that has said that we are personally responsible, I mean, personally responsible for what happened at Grand Park, for the actions of a, of a couple of officers. I mean, I don't think you're going to get a reasonable decision here, no matter what you do. I hope we would get the best, I mean, we're doing our best to try to comply and try to straighten things out. But I honestly feel that it doesn't matter. This particular judge has in his mind that he's going to take charge of this thing, and I don't think anything we do is going to change that, and I said that originally.
Mr. Hernandez.
Did I say 85% of the time?
You did, yes.
I believe that was the number.
Mr. Deaton, just, I don't know if this uncomplicates things for you, but why is it that we cannot, as a council, hear your thoughts about the two prospective proposers at this time or within the next week before you make an ultimate selection so that you could have the perspective of the full council, being that you represent to us?
In a generic sense, there's no reason at all. In this particular instance, I need a week to think about how that interaction should take place.
Okay.
In the confines of, in essence, a legal process of request for proposal, confidentially, the indication of confidentiality information, that that could not be held in executive session or et cetera, and the nature of, of our position vis a vis DOJ, I need to think out that process. But I, I understand your position, and I, and I hope you understand my frustration.
No, no, and I understand your response, and I appreciate your response. I just thought I'd ask the question.
It's a good question.
Because I thought that that's where we're all kind of at right now. If you say you're down to two, if it was possible for us to hear what's going on, then maybe we could help you in some guidance on the one, so that as you're representing us on this oversight committee, you would have basically the full power of the council. I think the other alternative creates a hard situation for the council right now.
No question.
Because we want to be able to say we had a choice.
I agree. I understand.
Mr. Wax.
Ron, I think you're minimizing what's involved here. I mean, there are really two, two big issues. One is who, who the monitor should be and the criteria for which he's selected, and the other is the role of the council in making those decisions and, and related, the role of the public in having some kind of an input in this, both of which I think are really important. I don't want to be, come back here again a year from now saying, "Where was the council?" You know, I mean, I'm tired of that. Can't, you don't get it. But the public gets it, and the press gets it, and we should be getting it. We've got a role to play. And if we don't play it, if we just let Ron do it all the time, it has nothing to do with you. I have immense respect for you. But I don't have respect for us abrogating our responsibility and us not involving the public in exercising that. And that goes on over and over and over, and I can't think of a more important issue to say, to make a statement that that's not the way it's going to continue. And it just seems to me that this is not all that complicated, unless in fact you want, what Mr. Burnson is saying, that you're, that in the end, you're just going to let the judge. And if that's the way the judge wants it, well, then maybe that's the way it's going to be, but it shouldn't come from us not having exercised our own, our own responsibility. It doesn't seem very complicated at all to me for us to have a discussion on who the, who the various, the best people are applying for this job and the criteria by which they should be selected, even if there are disagreements in the different parties as to what the criteria should be. And that, and then after we've had that discussion, we can give you further direction to go out and negotiate a contract with one or with both and bring those back here, or with neither, or ask the judge for some involvement or clarification. I can't foresee all the steps along the way till I have the discussion on the first steps, but I don't want to give up our role and responsibility for involving ourselves in that way. And I'm going to go back to the same position, the same motion, which is really what I first proposed, which Ms. Miesekowski clarified, that we have, you know, we meet at least three days a week. This is not something like you only can come back here once and it's got to all be done. This is important enough, if we have to meet three times, we'll meet three times. But I just really believe that you, it's, I, I'm, I'm more than believe, you know, I just think it's really wrong to, for us to somehow not do this in it, in, in, in the way that we set out originally to do, and I'm going to reaffirm the motion that we do that.
Ms. Miesekowski.
I, I support what Mr. Wax is asking for. I suggest that we instruct Mr. Deaton to go back and tell the judge that it is our intent to very seriously work on this in the next three weeks and bring a contract forward. Next week, that he come and report to us on the progress, on the choices, on the selections, and then if we have to go back to the judge, and Mr. Deaton is the one who goes back to the judge three weeks hence and says, "Sorry, Your Honor, we said we'd get there, we didn't because the council raised some very significant issues," and that, that might have been a selection, there are reasons that the council chose not to select, that is going to be his and/or the city attorney's responsibility. But let's move forward on that course.
Anybody else this time? I believe what we have before us now is that you're going to come back with a discussion of the criteria and the, at least the two top teams.
In one week.
In one week.
And today, and today, the council's acknowledging we're going to tell the judge that in three weeks that we're going to be finished with this.
We're going to.
Yeah, we're going to work towards, I understand.
We're telling, we're working toward it, we hope to be done in three weeks. We'd better be done in three weeks, because if we're not done in three weeks, this is going to drag over and we're going to start all over again with a new mayor, a new city attorney, and new council members. We need to get, we need to get the show on the road. Yeah. All right. I think that completes item 20, I guess our unanimous vote on the motion, and we'll risk, we'll note and file Mr. Deaton's report of today. This brings, yes, Ms. Miesekowski.
On item 13, it, it involves the Domestic Violence Trust Fund, and it's, I would like to ask to reconsider it and send to Public Safety Committee. There has been some difficulty in accessing the fund in that it is CDD right now, and we need to work out how the trust fund, domestic violence providers can access it more easily than the current.
Okay. Open the roll on reconsideration of item 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. It's reconsidered, and we'll refer it to Public Safety Committee. Which brings us, I believe, to item 23. Let me also remind you, members of the council, that we have three closed-session items under item 17, and special one, let's do special one. Let's get that taken care of.
Special one is a motion brought forth by Mr. Ridley-Thomas, Florence Ann Walters, and a city attorney needs to opine on the findings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, April 20th, at approximately 3:30 PM, Ms. Tippi was shot by a stray bullet at 116th and Avalon. It was an apparent gang-related shooting, and this was a crossing guard who worked for the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. The police department have asked for this reward motion in order to get the community involved and to get some leads. Therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
All right. Open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, thank you. That's approved. So the matter is now before us. Open the roll on the motion. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is also approved. Fourth with on that. Okay, now, item 23. We have many people who've asked to speak, some of them in the same handwriting. The, this, let me, let me explain to the audience and to those multitudes of the mayor's staff who are here as well, the, but I think you guys already know it. The issue before the council is first and foremost whether to assert jurisdiction over the Library Commission's decision. So the, if, if the council, that takes 10 votes. If there are 10 votes to assert jurisdiction, the council will then vote on the question of whether to concur with or reverse the decision that the Library Commission made naming the library for Mayor Riordan. If there are not 10 votes to, to assert jurisdiction, that's the end of the issue.
Madam Chair, point of information, or I'd like to ask to the attorney, being that it's an agendized item.
Now, we're going to have a hearing.
Are we going to hold a hearing before we assert jurisdiction?
I, I think the, that's why I'm explaining this.
Right.
If, because I asked the same question.
Okay.
Technically, we would first decide whether to assert jurisdiction, and the first set of discussions would be yes or no, we should assert jurisdiction, and then if we did, we would have a hearing on the merits. Since we have all these people here, which will keep us here all day if we hear all of them, it was my intention to bend the rules a little bit and just make sure everybody understands what the issue in front of the council is, and then hear from however long you tell me you want to have this public hearing go.
That's fine.
The, I have, the last time I counted, there were about 20 cards here, but that was a while ago. So we have that, many people who wish to be heard. We do have to have, on both, altogether, we do have to have some kind of a hearing because it is an agendized item, and the public is entitled to be heard.
Last minute, probably.
How about five minutes on each side?
I was thinking total, but five on each side.
Madam Chair, I'll, Mr. Burnson and I started off disagreeing this morning. I move a 10-minute public hearing each side.
All right, five on each side? All right. So what I'm going to do, is that agreeable, members of the council? So here's how it's going to work. I'm going to take the cards first of people who have indicated that they are against the proposal, which I believe means they are against the prop, the section 245 motion, against asserting jurisdiction. I'm going to go through as many of those as get heard in five minutes. Then I'm going to switch to those who have indicated that they are for asserting jurisdiction and take as many of those as fit in. Do you have any more you want to put in, Anne? Can I, the lobbying team can move over that way. You have plenty of cards in already. Then I'm going to take those who have indicated that they are in favor of asserting jurisdiction, and then I'm going to, for five minutes, and then, even though it's not in the 10 minutes, we do have a couple of people who've asked to make general comments. And if they still want to be heard at that point, then we'll hear from them briefly, and then the council will vote. Ms. Walters will discuss her motion.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Let me just ask the procedural question, is that if we do have a public hearing prior to our voting to assert jurisdiction, and then we not vote to assert jurisdiction, then the item gets continued one day, or is the item no longer before?
No, it no longer exists.
It no longer exists.
But isn't according, according to what I have read, the last day to act is tomorrow?
Oh, you do, that, that is correct. You do have one more day. So if there isn't eight votes to receive and file the motion, then it would stay on the desk till tomorrow.
So what we could technically be doing here is having a public hearing, vote not to assert jurisdiction, a motion not receive eight votes, it would go over to tomorrow, and then we do this whole thing over again tomorrow?
You would have already had your public hearing today.
We would have already had the public hearing. We would have already had the public hearing. The, I think the, Ms., the answer to your question is, we have the public hearing, we take the vote, we see what the outcome of the vote is. Since we could act until tomorrow, somebody who wishes to bury the issue might move to receive and file, and if that received eight votes, it's received and filed. If it doesn't receive eight votes, it could carry over, but we will already have had the public hearing. Does that help?
No.
That's the best I can do. All right. If you would give me a five-minute clock, here we go. Jean Shigamatsu, followed by Barry Jablon, and I'd urge you to get in line fast, because we're going to move fast. Domingo Leon, Jay Handel, go.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Jean Shigamatsu, and I'm here from the West LA Chamber of Commerce, and I would just like to state very quickly that we are in favor of having the library named under Mayor Richard Reardon, especially in view of the fact that he has been very, very involved with education and children and libraries, and I think they all go together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. Barry Jablon.
You can lift that up so you can stand up.
Surely. I am a member of the Board of Directors of Siark, which is in Councilman Walters' district. I myself live in Councilperson Ms. Sikowski's district. Speaking as a lawyer, I, obviously, I understand that your decision whether to accept jurisdiction is something that you either can or can't do, and you probably only want to do it if there's a really extreme reason to do it. Speaking of someone who used to be a professor of Elizabethan literature, I'm so delighted that a mayor of Los Angeles should want a library named after him rather than the other kinds of facilities that often happen, that I ask you not to use your jurisdiction, not to use your discretion, not to exercise jurisdiction, and to let the library be named for the mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Leon.
Morning. My name is Domingo Leon. I represent the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers. Society is, has like about 20,000 members all over the United States, and we are against the motion. The members of the society use the library a lot, and I think it would be a very good recognition to have the name of the library to be on the name of the Mayor Richard Reardon. And I, against, on behalf of the society, against the motion.
Mr. Handel, followed by David Jackson, Bishop Blake, Peter Wu, if we get that far. Go ahead.
Good morning, Jay Handel. I'm the president of the West LA Chamber of Commerce, representing over 700 businesses and thousands of our constituents within those businesses. I come today because I think that it's a fitting tribute to the mayor. The mayor has taken this city in eight years, with the help of the council, obviously, but the mayor has taken this city from a situation where we have had such a negative brand to where we are now a championship city, as opposed to our neighbor city that used to have our champions, the city of champions. And it's just a very fitting, fitting thing for the mayor to have named after him, especially with all of the educational background that he's pushed with, through the city in trying to help our children and the city as a whole. So we are strongly in favor of it, and I have also, for receiving files, some backup emails from additional council and board members of our chamber and other affiliates. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson.
Yes, good morning again, once again, Madam President. I'd like to say that I have had experience, a great experience, with the Los Angeles County Central Law Library, and I like to see that name stay the same. And the reason why I say that is quite simple. When you are locked up and you are, go to represent yourself, and they send you to the law library that they provide for you, you'll find out real quick that most of the time that the books are, pages are tore out the books, or the whole case may be taken away from the book, and you have a real hard struggle. Now, I know great, Mayor Richard Reardon is a great person, I will give him that, he's the mayor of this city, and that's respectfully. But I don't think that we should be the kind of society, especially this kind of board, that always make these acts that we're going to lay and always give somebody something. We're not giving Richard Reardon nothing by naming his name on LA County building. There are a lot of names in that building over there when you read those books. And there's been a lot of great people that came through the law library. Let's leave the Los Angeles City County Law Library the name it is. Richard Reardon has millions. He can bill and name whatever he want. He can name a street after him or something, a boulevard. But he don't need our county law library system, because too many other people depend on that. If they get over there and start taking all the bills off the table, my five minutes not up?
No, no, you're not getting five minutes. The five minutes is for all the people who are, who are speaking, so we have some more people who are in line here.
Okay, what I'm just saying, you know, I'm trying to speak up for the people that I know that wants to go and use these law libraries. We don't need to be going and talking about we going over to rich, rich libraries.
Okay.
We ain't been going, we been going to the Los Angeles, and let's respect Los Angeles County. That's the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Let's respect Los Angeles County and Los Angeles City citizens.
It's Bishop Blake's turn now. And, Mr. Jackson, I had your card in the wrong pile, so I'm going to hear Peter Wu when you're done. Sorry. Sometimes you can't tell with the before, the for and against boxes. Go ahead.
Good morning to the members of the council. I want to express my gratitude for the assistance that you have provided in enabling us to dedicate our new cathedral on this past Saturday. The end of an exciting eight years of service approaches. Mayor Reardon has served us very, very well. One of his main priorities has been and will continue to be education, and it's only fitting that the Central Library, the symbol of education, be named in his honor. Our mayor has served us literally without salary. Our mayor, with his substantial means, is committed to giving his resources to the advancement of education. And I think to name the library after the mayor would certainly advance the cause and the work of our library. We named the terminal at the airport for Mayor Tom Bradley. I think the library should be named after our mayor, who has served us so faithfully and sacrificially. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop, and congratulations on your new cathedral. Mr. Peter Wu, and this will be the last speaker, Mr. Tuttle, who has sent us a letter, which you should all have, also would like to be heard, but we're going to hear from Mr. Wu, and then we'll go to the other side, and then we'll come back later. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Peter Wu, and I'm representing the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles. Our chamber represents over 400 businesses in the city of Los Angeles, mostly owned by Chinese-Americans. I'm coming here today to urge you to follow the decision of the commissioner to name the library under the, our mayor, Richard Reardon. There's nothing more appropriate to name a library under such a great leader who led us for the last eight years and his role, and his role as a mayor emphasizing education. Thank you.
Thank you. We've gone a little bit over the time. We're going to switch the, start the clock, we'll do the other ones now. Let me just point out to the members of the council that we are down to 10. So if anybody else is going to leave, that's going to close off the quorum here. Members of the council, do you want to hear from Mr. Tuttle before we switch to the other side? Okay, Rick, come on. No, I didn't. I didn't. But, Rick, you gotta do it briefly. Don't read the whole letter, we all read it already.
Thank you. It's no secret that over the years, I've had my difference with the Reardon administration on a variety of issues. There also have been situations where we've had occasion to work together. Having said that, I believe Dick Reardon has done a very commendable job as mayor of the city of Los Angeles, and certainly deserves this recognition in terms of the, and certainly deserves a major recognition. I think this recognition particularly fits his persona, because all of us who know Mayor Reardon know that he personally is a very literate man, he's deeply concerned with the world of ideas and with the world of books. Also, more importantly, through his involvements, both as mayor, where he's promoted literacy programs and has presided over an extensive expansion of the library budget and hours, he has worked to further the efforts of the library and the library foundation. Also, it occurs to me that the Central Library is an appropriate choice because of its importance as a symbol of the rebirth of downtown Los Angeles, and Dick Reardon has been deeply involved with the cathedral, the Staples Center, and the Disney Concert Hall, and has been a mainstay of those efforts to rebuild and revitalize, a second wave of revitalization following Mayor Bradley's efforts earlier downtown Los Angeles. I'm strongly in support of this, and I'll leave it to you all to figure out the parliamentary process by which this gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're starting the clock on the other side. We're going to hear as many of these people as we fit in here. Roy Stone, Steve Sheldon, Clementine Lide, if I'm reading that correctly, Michael Nagira, John Wellborn, and Peter Baxter. Okay, go.
I'm Roy Stone, president of the Librarians Guild, ASME Local 2626, representing over 300 librarians and a great many members of the public who do not believe that the Central Library should be renamed. We totally support the motion before you, as does La Pino, the LA Times, Daily News, and recent editorials and articles. However, if there is to be consideration to change the name, let it not be due to the 16 signers of the letter, the three library commissioners, and the 20 to 40 people here in favor of it today. But rather, let us have a real community meeting as the library board policy requires, and then the will of the people can be learned. This issue is far too important to let it be decided by improper and illegal actions of the commissioners. Everyone here, supporters of the change or not, certainly must agree that an open democratic forum is appropriate to deal with this. And finally, if I was not clear, the Central Library complex is already named for a man who served the city of Los Angeles for 28 years, dedicating his time to the library and created many, many nice things for the whole system in that time period. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheldon.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have to apologize, I mismarked my card, and I am fully supportive.
All right, okay, then you're on the other time there. All right. Clementine Lide?
Uh, they're safe, we're engaged.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to figure them out here. How about, now that one I'm sure is for. All right. Well, these are prob, Mr. Baxter. And then I'm going to go into the general comments, people.
Madam President, I'm just making it an abbreviation. My name is Peter Baxter. My respectful request is that your honorable counsel shall include in this motion a direction to the City Ethics Commission to study and report on the general subject of naming buildings, parks, or streets as contrasted with naming legislative chambers, courts, and library collections. These are highly sensitive questions, and they may become more complicated and confused without an analysis presented from the viewpoint of ethics rather than from a purely political viewpoint. The people of this city have determined upon creating an ethics commission. The office of the city attorney is not motivated immediately and directly by the question of ethics. The office of the city attorney is well-prepared in the fields of criminal prosecution and civil litigation. The prosecution and the defense recognize an adversary form of litigation is required in our procedures. Are there characteristics in ethics about which we do not know?
Mr. Baxter, I think your point is clear, and I'd like to let the other people speak as well.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, ma'am. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Okay, Roberto Gutierrez, followed by Helen Johnson.
Madam President, distinguished counsel, I'm here today as an individual. I'm a local artist, and I think that it would be appropriate and right to name Mayor Richard Reardon on the library, primarily because he's done such a terrific job for the city as mayor for the last eight years. What comes to mind for me is the Democratic Convention, as well as other activities that have to do with education for our children. And I think that it would be terrific to have the name.
Sir, I'm sorry, you had indicated general comments, and I'm trying to save this portion of the time for, I will put your card in the file. But I'd like then to call, so we don't need to hear more on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Let me call John Wellborn. Here, Mr. Gutierrez already spoke.
I thought you called Helen Johnson.
But I see that you're a part of the cheering squad, too, and the, this is the time for the people who have a different point of view. So let me put your.
You called my name, I, I.
Let me hear first from the people who are entitled to this part of the five minutes, and then we can see what the council wants to do after that.
All right.
And I apologize to you, but your card didn't indicate that clearly went away. So, Mr. Wellborn, it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam President. Is anybody, how much time is left? Because I don't want to really.
Actually, it's 46 seconds, but it's a little more than that, because we used some of it explaining the procedures. So we'll give you about a minute here.
All right. My name is John H. Wellborn, and my address is 434 South Plymouth Boulevard in Windsor Square. I am the secretary of the Los Angeles Library Association. In 1872, the original Los Angeles Library Association founded what has become the Los Angeles Public Library, and the modern Los Angeles Library Association was created as a private, nonprofit library support organization at the suggestion of the Board of Library Commissioners in 1963. I've got a long association with LAPL and the Central Library in particular. In the late 1970s, I worked with the founders of the Los Angeles Conservancy and others concerned, and I think I'm just going to skip due to time to skip 1990, '81 to '83. I will skip 1912 to 1918. I will skip the 1990s and the '93 with the saving the library in the West Lawn. And I will say that with that background that I can hand to you in a letter and a most intimate knowledge of the library, I would like to say that today I come to speak on behalf of Mayor Richard Reardon. Now, it's entirely appropriate that Dick Reardon's friends, and I count myself among them, and his supporters should urge that his service be honored as mayor. However, I've got to assume that the signers of the March 28th letter to the library board, including such esteemed leaders as Bishop Blake and Bishop Borsch, Councilman Burnson, and several other of you council members, did not know when that letter was signed that the Central Library already has a name, the Von Kleinschmidt Library. As you know, the Central Library was, as you now know, it was named in honor of the famous USC and LAPL board president, Dr. Rufus B. Von Kleinschmidt, in 1964. That's the reason, several years ago, the library was not named for Mayor Tom Bradley, who, as Mayor Reardon, had significant involvement in libraries. The library commission then did consider naming it, but they too learned that the library already had a name. So I urge strongly that you council members, and Mayor Reardon for that matter, counsel the present library commissioners to reconsider their recent decision made by just three of those five commissioners. I believe that those commissioners, Mr. Brode and the other proponents of honoring Mayor Reardon, should join me in asking that a lasting memorial, and not the Central Library, be named in his honor, in the honor of his service. Otherwise, if no restraint is shown now, if no respect is shown now for the action of past commissions and councils, what is to keep a future commission or a future council, say in a few years or even after July, from renaming the Richard J. Reardon Central Library after whoever is in favor then? Central Library has a name already, it has had that name for nearly 40 years, it is an honorable and appropriate name, and I don't believe that name should be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That closes the public hearing, and it's Ms. Walters' motion, so we'll hear first from you. Well, the first vote is going to be on whether to assert jurisdiction. Does anybody have a need to talk about whether to assert jurisdiction?
Yes.
Well, Ms. Walters goes first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and a thanks to the speakers who took the time to come down here. The issue before us at this moment is not, does not go to the merits of the issue of naming or not naming the library after the mayor. It does go to process, the process that should have been followed by the Board of Library Commissioners as they took that action. They indeed did not follow their own process, which calls for, and I read to you from the process section of their rules, it says, "If other than a geographic name is under consideration, a meeting with the community for community input will be held. If this is a name change, there should be a demonstration of evidence to the commission that there's a broad base of agreement on the need for change by the community served by that facility." That did not happen, and it has not happened yet. And so, council members, I'm asking you today to assert jurisdiction over the commission's action, and the effect of asserting jurisdiction will allow us to take an action that sends it back to the library with, for the purpose of them rehearing it and abiding by their rules. That is what is being voted on here today. First vote is whether to assert jurisdiction. The second vote is whether to take an action, and that action would be to send it back to the Library Commission for a rehearing and request for them to follow their own rules. And I think that in the best interest And I think that in the best interest of all of the people of our city, that is the fair and just way to proceed. And I hope, council members, that you will recognize that, and that you will vote to assert jurisdiction, and then vote to take the action of sending it back to the library commission for a rehearing according to the established processes that they've had. And then, that's the place and time where we can talk about the merits of naming it or not naming it after Mr. Reardon. Thank you, Madam President, and I would move that we assert jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hernandez. No? Don't feel compelled, I think your name's up here.
I didn't know I pressed my button.
Okay, well, I'll, we'll go to Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, there probably ought to be a better way to decide how things are named after prominent people in our city government, or otherwise in the city. Maybe it ought not to be by a commission that is appointed by that individual, I don't know. Certainly, Mayor Reardon is worthy of a dedication of some sort, whether it's the Central Library. When I signed the letter, I was not aware of the fact that Rufus Von Kleinschmidt had precedent. However, that having been said, I don't think that it would be appropriate for the council to get involved in this matter. I think the commission has acted, and under the process we have today, and for us to further thing, further this would just be mudding the waters, and I think it would be unfair to the mayor. And I think it's something the council really should stay out of, so I am not going to support taking jurisdiction.
Ms. Zikowsky.
I agree with Ms. Walters that this is an issue essentially of process, and it was only through the very rushed effort of the commission to put something on agenda and not follow its own rules, that I think the whole city became aware, and the library commission became aware, that in fact, this library already had a name. As was indicated by Mr. Wellborn, in the '80s or early '90s, after there had been a major campaign to save the Central Library, that Central Library was threatened with demolition. It was through major efforts of thousands of citizens, thousands of friends of the librarians, thousands of people in the library association who helped save it, and then came out again. I don't know how many of you remember the wonderful campaign, Save the Books, after the library had been burned, where this citywide community came out to save that library and restore it and help it be rebuilt. After all of that effort, which had a number of wonderful people involved, both Mayor Bradley, people from the corporate sector, and people from the public sector, there was an effort to name the library. And at that point, the commission appointed by Mayor Bradley declined to take that option because it already had a name. Who is Rufus Von Kleinschmidt? He was 28 years a member of the Board of Library Commissioners, most of that time as his president. He helped create the separateness of the LA library by getting a charter amendment. For 28 years, he worked, got bond issues passed, et cetera. Members of the council, I was gonna ask today a member of the library staff to come up and tell us, and ask, tell us whether or not they followed their process. I would ask that, except there's nobody here, because the members of the library staff were instructed not to come. The library, I, that question could be asked, I think it would be, remain unanswered. We are very, very concerned in this council about process. We, in fact, one of the speakers asked, there should be a process for naming public buildings. We did that. In fact, we did that, and we asked the library department to develop a process not more than about five years ago, when there had been some concern about whether or not we should name a branch, and how we should name a branch. The library commission reported back to us that they had a process. That process would involve a meeting with community groups, showing that there is a broad base of agreement for the need of a name change, if that name change were to occur. The library commission did not do that. They put it on in the shortest possible time, held it, and even, even if we had had a five to nothing vote by this library commission, we would've said, "That's a strong majority." This library commission voted three for it, one opposed, and one abstention. That there were only three votes of this library commission, and not only, not following its own process when that was raised at their hearing. I think it is appropriate that we assert jurisdiction and go through this with the due course, the due process, that, that the dignity of the library commission, the dignity of the naming process deserves. And I, too, share Mr. Wellborn's expression. I think that Mayor Reardon has been a very, very good mayor for this city, and deserves an honor, deserves a tribute, deserves something of distinction to be named. But the way in which this was done, the way in which it is being done today, and not having the library staff here to discuss their process, not having a member of the library commission here to discuss why and how they did something, and why they waived their process, if in fact, they even acknowledged that they waived it, I think does a disservice to the naming and to any dignity with which it would be, attempted to be bestowed. And I think that it is appropriate for the assertion of jurisdiction and going through the process with the deliberation that we, the council, asked the commission to put forward a few years ago, when we got into a similar situation.
Mr. Fuhr.
You know, this shouldn't become a referendum on whether Mayor Reardon believes that libraries are a good thing, or has supported the library. Of course, that's true. It shouldn't be a referendum either on Mayor Reardon's general performance in the city. He is a widely popular mayor. But to pick up on something Ms. Zikowsky just said, and take it one step further, not only does it assault the dignity of the library and undermine the credibility of the commission to have this process proceed as it has, it assaults the dignity and undermines the importance of the honor from Mayor Reardon's standpoint. Who wants to have something named for them in a way that avoids public process, that appears to have been slipped through at the last minute, that avoids now a public discussion of consequence in the city council? Why would you want to be honored in that way? Those who have said that Mayor Reardon deserves recognition in the city are right, and it should be done the right way, not only from the standpoint of the residents of the city, but also from the standpoint of the mayor. So, by my life, it seems to me that, that the council should assert jurisdiction, because in so doing, we're asserting not only the importance of the principle that when there is a public process, it should be furthered, but also asserting that when in this city we take the extraordinary step of naming a significant institution for a public official, or anybody else for that matter, that the process ought to honor the person, as well as the outcome honor the person. And that that is, that's a precedent that we ought to hold, I think, very dear as we move forward in a whole array of namings that the city's gonna engage in, as we have, for example, in naming this council chamber. I mean, how ironic it is that today, we had a public discussion, in which anyone in the whole city could have participated, about whether to name our council chamber for our fallen president, for John Ferraro, and may end up not allowing a public discussion about whether the library should be named for our sitting mayor.
Ms. Walters, Mr. Hernandez also wants to be heard. Do you want to close, and I'll let him go first, or would you like to go next? Either way. Mr. Hernandez.
You know, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I guess there's an uproar, so I get to talk now. And I'm reminded of Congressman Roy Ball's advice to me, that you don't have to take back anything you don't say. So, I'll be very careful with my words. Did we have a public hearing on the renaming of the council chambers after Councilman President Ferraro?
Actually, we did, and nobody put in a card. It was on the agenda today.
Yeah, and it happened. And I kinda wanna point that out, too. Members of the council, I was reading the library resolution, and it talked about--
Actually, Mr. Baxter spoke.
Right, I heard you have item number 12. And I was reading the library resolution, where they listed a list of people in the community as evidence and signatures of the letter. And in that list, they also mentioned council members Hal Burnson, Nate Holden, Nick Pacheco, Rudy Savornich. I thought I'd point out that the council member they didn't mention was myself, because I also signed the letter in support for the renaming of the Central Library after Richard Reardon. Now, I didn't do that lightly. Some of you might think I did, but I didn't. And I did go through a process myself in making that decision. Part of that process included people who I felt should, I should know their opinions, and Miguel Contreras was one of them, Lot Cook was another one, because I sat on the library commission with Ms. Walters, and I knew the role he played at the library. And basically, these were also people in support of the recommendation. There was no question in my mind that the mayor would like to see this happen. I'm not that kind of person. My ego doesn't say I need to have something named after me right now. But the bottom line is, in thinking about the process, I felt that this was a mayor that has contributed to the children. And I'll be honest with you, I did not know that the library was already named after a past USC president. Don't get me wrong, I went to Oxy, so I didn't know about the past USC president. But when I saw the resolution by the library commission, it took into account that the building is named after the past USC president, and it was talking about naming the complex after Mayor Reardon. Members, I basically am not gonna vote to assert jurisdiction. And I can say that quite frankly, because I think that many of us have already made up our minds. We stated them in the newspaper, the person who brought it before us was very much against the naming of the library after the mayor. And the intention might say, she might be saying today, "I want to have a public process," but the reality is, she would not like to see the library named after the mayor. I basically, in my last 60 days, don't want to participate in that kind of controversy. And it's based on that opinion that I'm gonna not vote to assert jurisdiction, and I've learned to count votes in my few years here on the council. So, I just thought I'd let everybody know where I stand. I do think the mayor has contributed to the city, particularly to the children, and I'm hoping that when his, God calls him back, he will consider the library as something to leave many of his millions to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walters.
I'm sure it wasn't news to anybody within earshot that I stand opposed to naming the library after Richard Reardon. That has been very clear, I stated that frankly, in a state of shock, when I first heard that he was lobbying, he was doing what he could to have the library named after him. And if there's any question about his role in it, just witness the number of staff people he had here today, and the children that he had here today. The Los Angeles Times ran a great editorial call, and they headlined it, "Name in haste, repent at leisure." And let's see what naming in haste and repenting in leisure causes. One, it caused the library commission to not only name the library, Richard Reardon, but to unname it after Dr. Rufus Von Kleinschmidt. So, they took two actions, to unname it and to rename it. And their agenda said that they were having, that the issue on the agenda was the naming of the library. I believe that's what the agenda had on it. So, there may be a glitch there with respect to the Brown Act. The Times said, "It would be in the interest of both the city and those who want to honor the mayor to allow fuller public discussion before deciding whether renaming the Central Library is the best way to acknowledge Reardon's contributions." Several of you have spoken and said that it is not the best way to honor his contributions. And any number of you have said that you feel that he has contributed to the city, and something, an appropriate demonstration of that should be conducted. However, this is not it. This is not the way to go about honoring somebody. It is the way you go about doing it if you're pushing it through in a heavy-handed manner as some type of self-fulfilling legacy. Council members, I know the chances are slim that we will assert jurisdiction, but I urge you to do that. And regardless of my position on naming it or not naming it, the fact still remains that the library commission did not follow their own rules, they did not have the more complete public discussion that their own rules required them to have. They still will not do that unless we take that action of asserting jurisdiction and sending it back to them for a more complete public hearing. And I urge you to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. I have nobody else wishing to be heard, so the first vote is whether to assert jurisdiction. A yes vote would assert jurisdiction, a no vote would not. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
All right, so we have not asserted jurisdiction. And the matter, hold on, hold on. The matter is just there.
Unless the council wishes to take a vote--
Unless there's an eight vote--
Of eight votes to receive and file it. It'll remain on the agenda tomorrow--
It remains on the agenda for tomorrow. If there is no action taken tomorrow, then it dies of its own weight.
That's correct.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the, and the mayor's staff. Thank you, all of you with the buttons. We are now going into public comment. All right, Mr. Savornich has moved to receive and file. Open the roll on whether to receive and file. Ready? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, four noes.
All right, that is not approved. Okay, we have remaining, we have the closed session items, and we have the time for public comment on items not on today's agenda. I do not have any cards under public comment for items not on today's agenda. Mr. Jackson. Just go talk, we know who you are. And then, when following this, we will go into executive session for, I know, Winnie, we don't agree on everything. Go ahead. And we're down to 10 members, so we, at least one of these executive session things must be done today, so please don't anybody leave. Mr. Jackson, the clock's ticking.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry about that. I would just like to make another general comment today, and it's just about the issue that's going on. I would just like to read something that I wrote. Here it is. I was talking earlier about how I felt, how I feel that the laws are, and that how the laws are not observed by the police enforcement, and that I come here. I found a case when I was representing myself in private asylum that freed me and saved my life, and that the state of California have long and consistently rejected the people contentious for probable cause for arrest, when it's established what arresting officer who actually was made, gave those instructions to the officer transmitted, that a proof was required. And that proof was simply this, that if I get arrested, and the prosecution was supposed to bring the evidence to court, and the judge to make a judicial assessment of it, and they didn't ever have this information, why was I arrested? I just want to leave it, and I just hope that y'all would look at Remers, Madden, and Harvey, because those cases in 1970 makes everything clear. We don't need to be running around here talking about, "The police stopped me, and he talking about, 'Well, I ain't got nothing to show.'" He gotta have something to show me if you arrest me. Because if they arrest me again, and they don't show me how they made the arrest, then I'm gonna be right there. We're gonna have court right there. I'm not talking about taking him and doing him nothing, but we're gonna argue right there. Because, you know, I want a receipt when I'm arrested, so I can have appellate court to look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That closes the public hearing, and the council will now go into executive session, which means that anybody who is not involved in the executive session is welcome to depart. means that anybody who is not involved in the executive session is welcome to depart. That's correct. That's B. Yeah. Okay. All right, we're back. Next item, 17A.
Item 17A is a city attorney recommendation and settlement of case for $11.5 million in return of $3.2 million in retention.
Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that, please.
And item 17B, a request that matter be continued until May 8th.
Correct. Item 17B is continued one week.
In unanimous vote.
Okay.
The desk is clear.
Do we have any adjourning motions? Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, unfortunately, unfortunately, I am asked that we adjourn in memory of Janet Brogan, the mother of Nate Brogan.
Oh, I'd like to join you.
Nate is, Nate is not only a volunteer in the community, but serves on our MetroLink Board and has been very, very involved in environmental and transportation issues in our community. This is his mother, who is 83 years old, and she had volunteered for numerous charities and political campaigns during her life. And I would ask that we adjourn in her memory. There's a whole column here, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to read it, but she will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, call the roll. Thank you. We are adjourned.